Anything else? Mr. Goldman?
Not at this time.
All right, Mr. Tisdale?
I plan to make some comments on this, but I think I will. You know, I'm a jaunt bit. I worked forty years in the construction industry from nuclear power plants to new plants here in Andalusia. I've worked almost the same amount of time in restoration of buildings, completing probably the second most devastating buildings there by Atlanta, which was a junior station in London, completed three halves of that building. Mr. Wiggins, on the other hand, is a draftsman. Mr. Moore, I'm not sure exactly what his expertise is. They're making calls on buildings. They're talking about the mahogany doors, the touch stuff, the marine harness, or whatever would suit him. I'm sure Mr. Wiggins probably got mahogany doors on the house. Now, I'm really going to let you know, this is setting the tone for what you're looking to do on some others that are more serious, which I've talked to you about on storm radials and other issues with. I'm willing to make repairs on the building within reason. All Mr. Wiggins had to do was turn around and scree, and he'd realized the city had taken up my apartment on this building and the tenants vacated the property. We were in the middle of a project when the windows were stuck. The building has a good roof on it. If you'll notice, that is treated lumber, Mr. Wiggins, and all the frames are built out of it, which stopped short of putting the windows in because no one could rent a building. And if he turned one more step around, he'd noticed this Harry Higgins building, which also my cousin Bob Brooks is involved with, has no glass in it, has no roof on it, has no anything. It's a complete failure of a building. He turned around and found a structure like this. I don't know what his motive is, but maybe you'd be there. I think he probably did.
I would just make one comment to that. You know, we can't do an abatement action on every building in this town that needs it at one time. We have to take it as our forces allow us to, as our manpower allows us to take it, as we have time on the council to work on this and the reasonable amount of accuracy that we are able to get. This is not the last abatement action that will be taken by this city council. This is the first one under this new code. But there are other buildings that need addressing, as you point out, Mr. Tisdale, and in time they will be. But we're doing what we can right now.
Do you mind if I call up?
Pardon me?
Do you mind if I call up one more comment?
Sure.
Prior to this new abatement law coming in, I've got numerous complaints that have been submitted to this city here, which would always appear. When this new abatement law was proposed, I asked the city of Andalusia, and I believe this answer came from Mr. Wiggins, that the only two buildings that I had real issues with were the James Store and the Thaler building. And I heard contractors pulled crewmen and dump trucks and did demolition for about eight weeks straight. In fact, that's where the building material is that you're going to talk about later on another property came from. I'm doing work asked by the city of Andalusia without any direction on the abatement law. Now, when I finish that, I sent you an email, and I've got a copy of it, where I asked you, okay, I've now done my part, how about the city fix these storm sewers that had been a major disaster, all the way back to when Mr. Mount was the mayor of the council, month before the pandemic, at which they agreed to fix it. Last thirty-five years, you've done nothing. Nobody can miss. None of one mayor since Charles Brown has done one thing, have taken these storm sewers out of the place, and the square is regone. And I know for a fact that happened because I was on the front page of Paul Armstrong's debate event. Now, he could just say it. But that's one of the problems with these buildings. You cannot build and rebuild a building over open city storms.
Okay.
By the way, when I sent you that message, I got another, I did get it at the abatement forum, I think it was, within about five days.
Let me ask. Mr. Wiggins, does anything that's related to the building that we're talking about now, 201 South Three Knot Street, have to do with storm water issues?
No.
Okay. All right. Anybody from the public wish to make a comment, one way or the other, about this building?
I would, your honor, I want your boy, Dr. Mike Johnson. I just appreciate the education I've given here, but I don't like Mr. Goldman mentioning blighting effect. I just was interested in what, I was that player in this audience, and what, how do you, are you making a determination based on the fact of blighting effect, because you mentioned that too? I mean, Mayor, that's my, my try.
Yes, that's no problem. Describe for him, if you will, Mr. Goldman, what you mean by blighting effect, how it comes about, and what is the impact on the community to other property owners?
I'd be happy to. And in this case, when I use the word blight, I mean it by its dictionary definition. And there are actually two alternative forms. The first is a, refers to that part which you can see. It's a dilapidated condition. But there's an alternative definition of the word blight, and that is something that frustrates plans or hopes. And I believe that that is very much an important part of this process. And I'm not asking you to rest your decision on that at all, but merely that you weigh it as a part of this. Because it is my belief, and that the reason why I go from one end of the state to the other, talking about dangerous buildings, is because I understand the effect that they can have on communities, that they have on neighborhoods, that they have on downtowns, not just in Andalusia, but in every state, or in every city across the state. And I believe it is an important part of the stewardship of elected officials to do what they have the power to do on behalf of their cities, to make sure that they are safe places to live, that they are productive and contributing areas. And it is not just that which you see, but also that which is absent. And I believe very much that an important part of the problem is not just what you see with your eyes when you pass by, but the people who once occupied that building. And the people, it is an absence from this community. It is something that could be put to more productive use if prepared. And I hope the property owner will do that before the time for appeal runs. There's still another twenty days before the council would take action. We are always hopeful that the city does not have to be the ones to take those actions. We consider it a matter of last resort, but that's where we are tonight. And if we had another plan before us, I would offer it to you. But that is what I mean when I say blight. It is both that which you can see and that which has an effect on the surrounding community. And frankly, vacant structures, as this one, we believe was treated, can cause all sorts of problems for neighborhood safety. They can contribute to vermin pestilence in and out of the buildings, particularly when they've been left open. In this case, not properly boarded back up, as you've heard, we don't believe it's a solution that will be lasting for any meaningful amount of time. So all of those things combined together, I think, put it fairly in your purview to decide whether this property, and it's all the combined findings of the officials that are there before you constitute a nuisance, not just any one factor.
So the blighting issue is a make wait argument?
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
As we refer to it in the law, it is a make wait argument. It doesn't carry the question on itself, but it makes wait for the final result. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay. We will close. Anyone else from the general public? We will close the public hearing portion of this and take up the recommendation, members of the council. The recommendation is that the matters that were contained in the list pendants that was filed against or in this property, 201 South Three Knot Street, are still correct, that in the opinion of the authority, the building is unsafe and is a public nuisance and in need of repair. And your motion would cover those items.
Mayor, I make a motion to find the property unsafe and a public nuisance and accept the findings of the city official.
All right. We have a second?
Second.
And just to clarify, that on when it's accepting the findings, that's the findings and the recommendation of repair?
Yes, I think that is it. Okay. Anything, we have a motion in a second. Anything further from the council, any comments? I would like to just take up where you left off about there still being time to work, the property owner to work with the city to get an agreement to fix this, and something that we could live with, but the time is fleeting. So with that having been said, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you for that. All right. Next item is 254 Historic Central Street. We will ask, is there any, is the owner or anyone interested in that property present here tonight?
I'm Ted Dale.
Mr. Tisdale? Okay. All right. Anyone else? Okay. Anybody from the public who's interested in this matter? I don't, we take that up later. Yeah. I got that out of space there. Okay. Mr. Goldman, you will move forward on the 254 Historic Central Street.
Okay. Again, you've been presented with the list pendants for this property that contains findings of the appropriate municipal official, with the affidavit of publication, with photographs of the property. You've also been presented with a report with the recommendations of the building official. This particular property, and you'll see it there, which faces Historic Central Street, is behind the depot, although in trying to understand the layout, this particular property contains four separate buildings. And as you'll hear this evening, it's the recommendation of the appropriate municipal official that those be demolished and the premises as a part of the demolition cleaned up. And we'll go through that in more detail in just a moment. But you have that recommendation in front of you, explaining that process for demolition and cleanup. You also have, again, just to remind you, Mr. Tisdale's email of today, photographs that he's offered, and letters that he has offered in the past. And so I wanted to make sure that those were submitted on his behalf. And I'll go ahead and call up Andy Wiggins to take us through the photographs of 254 Historic Central Street.
If you look on the bottom left, this is structure number one of Exhibit A. If you look at the bottom half of the roof, you see the roof has collapsed in on that structure. And if you look over to the top right, you will see the cracking in the building and basically the header around the door is collapsing because of the little archway there. The wood up underneath it is rotting away. If you look, this is structure number two, has no roof. Basically, the building is deteriorating and has tremendous amount of vegetation in the middle of it. And as you can see in the top right picture, basically all over the interior of the, all over the interior of the structure, it has no floor in it, no, it's just the hull of a building. As you can see, the bottom left picture there, you see where, you know, the brick are coming loose from the building, both around the bottom of the old loading dock there. And to the right there past the window, you see that's coming loose also. And if you look at, this is structure number three that is there. If you could see the roof, it has a ripple wave effect, the bottom left of your screen. Just a matter of time before that gives away, you can see that on the far right, vegetation has already came through the roof and has begun to accumulate and grow on top of the building. If you look at the top right, you can see where the brick are deteriorating and basically falling off the building. We don't have a picture, but I think down below you can see where some of the brick have deteriorated, where they fell into pieces from the wall. If you'll look at Exhibit A here of structure number four, you can see that this is parcel walls of buildings. If you look at the top right, you see the cracking and so forth in the building wall there that... And then if you look on the top or bottom left, I'm sorry, bottom left, you'll see all the vegetation growing around the walls, and you can see out there kind of bowed out and so forth. Exhibit B is on the same piece of property. If you look at the top left of your screen, this is all structural debris that was taken from another location and stockpiled, whatever the verbiage is, onto the property. The bottom right picture, you can see the same debris extending along. You also see the old rail cars, which we consider to be an attractive nuisance. I mean, they've been shown on the internet and other things. They need to be secured.
Explain what you mean by shown on the internet?
The rail cars, there's a website, like trains and so forth, and someone had went out on the property and had taken pictures of the train cars and posted them on the internet, on the worldwide web.
And on that, did they tell people how to go and find those train cars and tell them to go to the site?
Correct, that they were located in Andalusia at the old depot. Again, there's more debris. It's top left, shows more debris. The bottom left shows that all out in the area, there's different types of metal and other debris that are laying out there that can create a safety issue. And then the last photo, it's more of the rail cars. You have one of the old wooden cars that has collapsed. And then you have the open, you see it top right, the rail cars that are open. Again, that creates an attractive nuisance for people to go into and so forth.
While you're here, the findings in the list pendants, are those still true and correct today?
Correct.
And is it your opinion that the condition of this property constitutes a, is unsafe to the extent that it's a public nuisance and due to be demolished?
Correct. I do.
And does your report explain, which has been offered into the record, explain how you would advise that demolition be accomplished?
Yes, sir, it does.
Did the city authorize any debris storage on that property?
No, sir.
And has the city been consulted regarding any repairs that would be performed on that property?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you. Nothing further at this time.
All right. I believe, Mr. Tisdale, do you have comments on this property?
Yes. I want to address Mr. Mount first before he raises his hand and looks at everybody. This goes back, this part of the property is, it's two sides to the story, and of course the period one. This property goes all the way back to when Mr. Mount was the council manager, many fair. We have records and letters, council meeting minutes for the city to read. The fact that he goes back to one person, Charles Brown, who actually did this. But anyway, the city agreed and passed a resolution to say a wood fix city storms that were put under these buildings. We went about our own private money to demolish these buildings. That's why they have no roofs on them, not because the roofs have fallen in. But we found out as we did this, that each of these buildings had open city storms that were dumped or under the building, like swimming pools. And as late as about three or four months ago, they sent an email to the mayor and asked him what he was going to do about this. He first led, he didn't know anything about it. But this goes also back to the redevelopment of the square, where I was the chairman of that project, and we had money in the budget to redo the entire storm sewer and that section of the tank. They were just out of the project and spending somewhere else.
Which mayor are you talking about?
Mayor Abachian. You're not completely listening.
I'm surprised.
Mayor Armstrong. Look at that. It's even on the front page that this project had been abandoned, which won't work on another building, owners, property. That's just maybe where the book is. But anyway, that's where our money went to storm sewers. And we're sitting here with these poor units. And while we were doing demolition, and I failed to mention this, the city issued a fire permit, a barn permit, to the contractor who burned down an eight thousand square foot building. The one that is a very tight building that you showed, they literally burned it to the ground, to ensure the city getting burned. Now, the city committed this, and came in and took part of that building down. They took the fences down, the gates down, and with the next wave, they took one of the walls down. They said the remaining walls were structurally sound. The other two buildings on the front, we've talked about, carried in now ourselves for years. We've talked to, we're trying to get an opinion out of the historic commission, whether they are significant to the district or not. We understand they're not in the best condition to go and get on ourselves. But as of this being, this has been expanded now to the two buildings on the end also, which the walls are structurally sound. But we didn't have any idea we needed help about that. But I think, you know, we agree that those buildings had a serious problem. We've tried to work with the city on four of them. Only now, you know, the city won't act like I've done nothing for the last thirty-five years. It's the city that's done nothing for thirty-five years. We have a part of the building, I want to mention this too. Great One and I made a lot of this entire property. City, on a prior occasion since the last election, has made three different options: cash, trade, and swaps. And finally, a few that I guess keep from the media, the city has backed down and they moved their moving project to the Florida Theater. And I want to point this out, because still everybody in this room understands, there's a heck of a lot more to this than John Hill is sitting around there, spending money. I spend more money and have spent more money in this town than anybody in the history of this planet. I'll just solo one shop in the center, I've got two more if I'm ready to do that. And I get very low corporation out of this making. And that's enough says. That's part of handling. And I don't have any problem taking those buildings down, but I think storm sewers is thirty-five years, long enough to give them a year or two, Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Is that all?
I would agree. I've asked for some time. We've already given a deferment, a hundred and twenty days, and a necessary deferment to come up with a plan. I think these buildings need to be taken down in an organized way, and I want the same deferment the rest of that.
Is that all?
Yes, sir.
I'll ask the same question to Mr. Wiggins. Mr. Wiggins, the condition of these buildings, in your opinion, does storm sewers or lack of storm sewers, or anything that Mr. Tisdale mentioned, have anything to do with their present condition?
No.
All right. Okay. Anybody from the public wish to make a comment?
Mayor, may I, if I may, may I address a question?
Sure.
To Mr. Tisdale, because I want to clarify what he was offering.
Okay.
For this particular property, are you saying that if you were given a hundred and twenty days, that you would be willing to demolish all of the buildings on this particular lot and to remove any of the debris that's there and the vegetation?
What I'm saying, I would likely give a hundred and twenty days, a necessary deferment. I'm working with the state right now. There's a certified historic taxpayer, layable buildings, and I think you should probably know about this, but it has to do with how many walls are standing and whether it's worth rebuilding and if it contributes to national register visit. And I'm trying to get a combination from them right now. If it doesn't contribute, can't be retained, then I will take it down and sell it.
Who are you working with, sir?
I've talked to Claude Mercer as late as today.
I mean, have you filed some sort of application?
We've talked, Mayor, I've talked to the historic commission at all.
No, sir, I'm asking a specific question.
Application to file. It's not something...
So you've talked to some people at the historic commission?
Yes.
All right.
So as, because that's a little bit different than any sort of deal I've ever been a part of on a remediation. And I just, it's important because it might change the recommendation if you were willing to commit to the demolition within a hundred and twenty days, but I understand from what you're saying, you can't do that based on where you are now.
Again, I will do the demolition, but I would like to get the opinion from what I consider a much higher source that understands what this property, Mayor, may not be.
Mr. Tisdale, how long have you owned this property?
Since Charles Brown owned it in nineteen eighty-four, eighty-five.
So...
In fact, it was nineteen eighty-five, I remember the city.
Thirty years?
When the city issued a barn permit. That's why I'm complaining about, I've been complaining, you said it for thirty-five.
You've owned the property for thirty years?
I would give thirty-five.
For thirty-five. But you're just now striking up a conversation with historic commission about...
No, no, we've talked about it before. I actually wrote the application to get the national register visitor in anybody.
I'm talking about these particular buildings that we're talking about right now?
No. The reason that entire district exists, it's basically a warehouse, a manufacturing district, and buildings such as yours on the square, the very reason the square is not in the national register of this district. If they're changed, then they would not exist. That's why this building mainly contributes materially to this district.
I would be interested in this proposition with respect to these properties, that we give, that we move, suspend the public hearing portion of this until March 1, the same consideration that we gave to the First National Bank building. And that by March 1, if we don't, if he doesn't have something positive or negative or whatever, by March the 1st, then we take this issue back up on March the 1st, just like we did the First National Bank building, property. Now, I think that... Help me think this through. We would go ahead and declare this a public nuisance, but not take any recommendation on it until...
March.
March the 1st. Is that the correct legal steps to take, sir?
Yes, sir, and...
I'm trying to give Mr. Tisdale the benefit, all benefits of the doubt here.
Yes, sir.
There's no question that those buildings, in my mind, constitute a public nuisance and ought to be demolished. But he's telling us that he has a possibility of getting some funding for that. But he's had it for thirty-five years, he hadn't obtained that funding. I'm willing to give him till March the 1st to come up with yes or no on the funding. Then we would take action on the recommendation, what action to take on it. Is that the correct step? Is that the correct step?
Yes, sir. Um, and I'm, I, I guess I'm trying to kind of, I guess respond on, kind of to what everyone's saying here. Um, you know, you can also always, you can either continue it like we did. You can also order it for demolition, but administratively defer for one hundred and twenty days. And if a plan is presented either where he wants to demolish it himself, or if there's something that he can present to the council and convince you that there's an opportunity there for repair, you can always?
That's, uh?
Back off that decision.
That's, that's four months. Uh, I think that's too long. Uh, I, I think he was, will know something, one way or the other, by March the first.
And, and I wasn't suggesting that that, that conversation be put off that long, just, and, yeah.
Yes, sir. The recommendation that stands before us right now is to declare it a public nuisance and order, order demolition. What I'm saying is, is that we will adopt the order, uh, declaring it a public nuisance, but not order the demolition until March the first. It gives him time to get back to us on.
If he doesn't bring us back something.
Mr. Mayor, if we take the recommendation, uh, that the appropriate official?
Get up to the mic.
Have, have done, uh, it's fourteen days till the next?
Mm-hmm.
Council meeting. And this doesn't require that anything have to be begun for twenty days.
That's right.
So if, if we did that, that would do basically what you were talking about.
Okay. You're, you're exactly right.
He'd still have twenty days, even though the council meeting is fourteen days from today.
I think the recommendation is that the list pendings is correct and that the property should be ordered, uh, declared a public nuisance and ordered demolished with this additional statement that the, that Mr. Tisdale has twenty days after this is, this action is taken to get back with you on some resolution of this. Now, that, that's correct, is it not?
Yes, sir.
He doesn't have to do anything for twenty days.
Under our ordinance, the city will take no steps towards demolition for twenty days.
All right. Okay. Y'all heard what the recommendation is, and I think we all understand he's, he'll have twenty additional days, uh, to, uh, secure whatever help he needs or get back with the city and work out some agreement that could be brought back to us later.
Now, does this cover all four buildings or just that one, just that one building just finished talking about?
If you haven't done, you think?
It will, it'll happen automatically. If he doesn't, if, if Mr. Tisdale, between now and twenty days from now, doesn't bring back something that satisfies our, our, uh, public official, municipal official, then the order will be, will be final unless, unless he appeals it to the circuit court. But that's, that's another issue altogether. So, uh, this, this applies to the whole, this whole number two fifty-four historic press history, does it not?
Yeah.
So that is the recommendation.
Plus the debris.
And the debris, plus the debris out there. I, I, I would say this about the debris, there ain't no historical commission going to give you authority to leave that debris out there. Uh, so I don't know why that couldn't be picked up pretty quickly. Uh, but, but out of the abundance of trying to be fair about this, we, we're not going to take any action on this for twenty days. All right. Do we have a motion?
I'm going to.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, the motion is, is to declare the list pendings correct, to order the property, uh, or to hold the property as a public nuisance and that it be demolished, all if, any, any further discussion?
You know, Mr. Tisdale, you've had certain number of days, same as the other people, to come to the city and try to work out a plan. What, are you going to do that now or you just going to let it drag on?
I suppose, Mr. Mount, I'm real special case. I'll act upon only with your city attorney. I've sent numerous emails to you, to Governor Jeffrey, to you, but.
Well, I'm not going to let you get by with that statement without this comment. The reason you have to speak to the city attorney is because you threaten to sue every one of us. And when people get threat, when people are threatened to be sued, they usually defer it to their city attorney. That's why we've done that.
That's the foundation. I have not threatened to sue anyone other than the fact that you won't fix your repairs and questions. Another subject I know, that's no excuse to ignore you.
Call for question. Call for question. All in favor, say, or indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Same sign. Thank you. Okay. We will now move to, uh, Lot on South Cotton Street. That's the only address I've got for that. Uh, is there anyone here who has an ownership interest in this lot on South Cotton Street?
I don't think they do.
All right. Let, okay, let the record show, Mr. Tisdale owns that as well. All right. Okay. Mr. Goldman?
All right. For this property, which, again, is a lot that runs alongside the, the depot building and behind, well, alongside the, alongside there, and it's shown on the map in front of you. This one also, as you heard described in the last one, contains building debris and some of the train car structures. And you have before you the lit, the package which contains the list pendings, the affidavit of publication, a number of pictures. You've been given the report of the building official with his recommendation and also, uh, the email from Mr. Tisdale, the photographs from Mr. Tisdale and the letters relative to this property. And so with that being said, I'll call on Mr. Wiggins to come up and to take us through a couple of the photos.
Mr. Wiggins, before you start, I, on my handout, I did not have an address, but you're showing this as two thirty-three South Cotton Street. Is that the correct address?
The lot adjacent to two thirty-three. E nine one one will not give us an address for a vacant lot, so it's the lot, it's the lot adjacent?
Okay.
To two thirty-three South Cotton.
All right. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and the par, the parcel ID is in the list pendings that, which describes the property also.
Okay.
So, as well as the description, you're right. Uh, as you can see, this, basically, this, this piece of property is more or less debris that joins the rest of it along with the rail cars and other, other numerous types of debris on the lot. As you see on the top right, some more of the, the debris that was stockpiled. Again, on the left, the rail cars that are overgrown along with a lot of other, uh, a lot of other type equipment. There again, there's, on the bottom right, you can see another train car that's, uh, as we consider to be the attractive nuisance. Again, you know, other various equipments, rail cars, things overgrown.
Mr., uh, Mr. Wiggins, you, we've used, thrown the word attractive nuisance around here pretty liberally tonight. Some of us know what that means under law and some of us may not. Would you describe to us or let?
I will, I'll let Mr. Goldman eat.
Mr. Goldman, give us the definition of attractive nuisance.
All right. An attractive nuisance is a condition that would, would be likely to invite trespassers, children, people who might take an interest in something particularly on the, on the property. This is why, for example, to give a different example of an attractive nuisance, if you have a swimming pool, you're required to put up a fence around it because it's considered to be an attractive nuisance and you're really on notice that people may come and take an interest in it. Again, as Mr. Wiggins mentioned in the previous hearing, but also applicable to this one, there are internet sites out there devoted to bringing people to the site. And there are also on, on the structures along here, evidence of graffiti and evidence of, of traffic. There's a fence along the front, but it is accessible to people who want to enter it. And therefore, if they were to go onto the property, would be exposed to the particular physical dangers of it. Again, you don't have to be on the property in order to render it unsafe to the extent that it's a public nuisance. We believe that this also is one of the properties that's contributing to a blighting effect in the area and, um, the weeds, um, which have been allowed to grow at times and, and the particular debris that makes it more difficult to control the weeds. The shelter that the debris provides for rats and snakes and mice and vermin and mosquitoes all provide, contribute to, to nuisance conditions. But, but those, those are external to the property. The attractive nuisance are those conditions on the property that draw trespassers and children to it.
Thank you, sir.
But with that said, uh, you can see the condition that the property's in along with the debris and the other, the other accumulation of, of debris and scrap and rail cars and so forth. It's our recommendation that it be, it be declared a nuisance and abated. And the recommendation is forty-five days from the day that all items are to be removed. And if any rail cars are to remain on the property, they'd be repaired and made into a safe, secure condition and not to be an attractive nuisance.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Tisdale?
Uh, only one thing I recognize, I have never wanted to get the lumber, replace the lumber on that site. And we were trying to get a head of this place to go on. I'm dealing with two buildings, I have to test the place to put, to fully attend and take that out. That's why I'm saying this either. Train cars, of course, I know there's a bunch of those there that has been broken into the other cars I think are secure. So, I can certainly, all overloaded, it's incredibly rare. It's just, I mean, even look at that. We don't want anything stirred, we'll take care of it, and four or five days will show up immediately. And if four or five days, not enough, they'll come back and say, good work.
All right. Anything further, sir? All right. The, the recommendation, uh, is that the list, matters in the list pendings that is filed with this, this piece of property are, is correct. The recommendation is that this constitutes a safety hazard and that it be declared a public nuisance, that the property be cleaned, that the train cars be, uh, made secure and safe, and, uh, that this be done within forty-five days. Is that, did I restate it correctly? All right. We'll declare the public, uh, hearing portion of this closed and go to the council. Do we have a motion to, to adopt the recommendation?
Mr. Mayor, would you repeat the motion?
Motion would be to, uh, find that the list pending, the matters contained in the list pendings are correct as described by Mr. Wiggins and in our materials, uh, that the, uh, declare that the area is, is described to you and as you've seen the photographs, uh, declare are a public safety hazard, to declare it a nuisance and that it be ordered, that the property be ordered to be cleared and cleaned of any debris, that the train cars be made secure and safe, and that that work be done and completed within forty-five days.
Mayor, before, I, I'm sorry, before that motion's made, um, just to clarify, would you mind calling to see if there are any other public comments?
I'm sorry. I, I overlooked that completely. Anybody else in, out here will make a comment about this particular piece of property?
Mr. Mayor, my name is Walter Boyd, I'm in, in, I'm just curious about attractive nuisance thing, because when you throw that term out, you really can be very vague about it. And I wonder if I can get a clarification for education purposes. Is attractive nuisance mentioned in the ordinance? Or you just come under the, that attractive nuisance is unsafe? Because when you throw these, everything, I can be an attractive nuisance. I'm an attractive nuisance.
Well, we're going to take, we're going to take you up later, okay?
But I just want to.
Uh, no, no, the, the attractive nuisance is a matter of law, is a, is a safety hazard, okay? It's a matter of definition and law. An attractive nuisance is a dangerous matter that needs to be made safe. That's what we're referring to, these as attractive nuisance. Areas where children may get in and get injured and, uh, little, little children are attracted to swimming pools, trains, uh, wrecked cars and all that kind of stuff. You've got to make them, uh, safe so that they can't get hurt.
Well, I understand that, and I know that what it is in law. I'm asking, is attractive nuisance mentioned in the part?
I, I think it is, yes, sir.
There, there are eleven fairly specific findings that the appropriate municipal official made in, in addition to sort of the, the general findings or his conclusions. One of those, and we haven't gone through them all, uh, they're, they're, they're in the evidence before the council, but let me read this one. And it says, "The building is neglected, damaged, dilapidated, unsecured or abandoned so as to become an attractive nuisance to children who might play in or on the building, structure, part of building or structure, party wall or foundation to their danger. Has become a harbor for vagrants, criminals or immoral persons, or enables persons to resort to the building, structure, part of building or structure, party wall or foundation for committing a nuisance or an unlawful act."
Okay. I think, uh, thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Okay, we'll close the public, uh, comment portion. Uh, do you want me to restate the motion?
No, I just, no, sir, I accept this.
All right. Do we have someone to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right. Mr. Wells makes a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Powell makes a second. Or any, anything further between the council about this parcel? All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. And the motion carries. Our last piece of property is two thirty-three South Cotton Street. Uh, is the owner of that property present? Mr. Tisdale acknowledged that he owns that property as well. All right. Mr. Goldman?
All right. Thank you. Again, on this property you have before you?
Again, we, I guess this is the public comments portion.
Yes, sir.
Public meeting portion outside. We'll make that clear. All right, go ahead.
Again, on this property you have before you the packet that contains the list pendings, the affidavit of publication, the pictures, the affid, or the list pendings contains the findings of the appropriate municipal official. You also have a written recommendation from the appropriate municipal official. And we also, again, on behalf of the, or for this property, um, at two thirty-three South Cotton Street, which is generally referred to as the Train Depot Building, would offer in as objections for Mr. Tisdale, his email, the photographs that were attached to it and, um, any letters that he submitted concerning this property. All right. This portion of the property, uh, you'll see highlighted on the aerial map and you'll see that, um, this, this is largely consumed, consumed by the Train Depot Building itself with a little bit of surrounding property. And with that as an introduction to where we are, I will call on Mr. Wiggins to come up and take us through a few of the photos.
If you look at the top right of your screen there, uh, you can see the condition of this building. It's pretty much self-explanatory. Uh, a lot of it is gone. If you look on the left, you see the top part of the building is exposed, which allows, uh, easy access for birds and other varmints. Uh, but you can also see the condition of the building, the siding falling off and so forth. Again, apologize for the darkness of the pictures. You see the backside of that building there, there's the wooden structure part. Then if you look to your right on the top, there's building material debris stored all around the brick portion of the building. There, you can see the graffiti, which goes back to the attractive nuisance that we've been talking about on the brick portion of the building. Again, you see that the roof, the building does not have a proper roof coating on it. Can see on the top right, start seeing the deterioration of some of the wood around the fascia and soffit of the building. So, it's our recommendation that the wooden structure in the back of the old depot there be demolished within thirty days, forty-five days from the day the building material, the debris and the weeds and other similar items be removed out from around the, the brick structure. Fifty days, the graffiti be removed, and seventy-five days from the day that a roof and, of the brick building be repaired to be weather tight to keep further deterioration of the building.
All right, Mr. Tisdale.
Honorable Assistant Attorney General Mr. Wiggins, sound true. He actually knows what I mean by this. This entire freight house structure has been rebuilt. Y'all should have color photos of funds twenty-three percent of your property. What's left on that freight house is siding, which is better placed than the finished roof. We've got underlaid, we've got brand-new decking, brand-new structure, brand-new floor, brand-new walls, brand-new sills, and floors under the building. Mr. Wiggins or Mr. Moore will make the comments that the foundations were banned, and they pointed to some piers in their photographs that's been taken. In terms of those piers, all piers that support the freight house platform, which we took completely off the building, and we left the piers purely for reference on where they were. They're not supporting anything, they're not implementing anything, and they're simply laying. Every pier out of that building is near perfect. The structure is near perfect. You have photographs of the working on the building, completely destroyed. Now, the state has a little dilemma on what the appropriate roof is for going on that building. That's why the underlaid is on it, but not the finished roof. The building originally had a signature shingle, later had a composite shingle, and I personally replaced it with a composite shingle with roofs on it. I've asked him to allow equipment metal, but he will not, except he never had others, so can't have. The front portion of the station had an asbestos slate, which was moved more ago, and can't go back to asbestos slate. Roof, if the building isn't a dry, the building is structurally fine. We can take the siding off the building tomorrow morning, it'd be rather preventable for accessible of it. But we're trying to hold off, finish siding and finish roof, put the building back in partnership. If you can allow us this training, freight house, train station, freight house, you're talking about taking down off the old courthouse and the Cameron building, maybe the most expensive building in Cleveland, far none. And in fact, we've gone and built that new, been completely nullified. Mr. Wiggins knows this. Mr. Wiggins was on the site when we were working on this property. He knows what we've done. Richard Page is the contractor, Michael Blair was on the project, so was Andy Wiggins. They know what we've done, and they're misleading. You both detect this building that, and handle it with the latest intentions.
Uh, Mr. Wiggins, would you go back through, back up those photographs that you were showing us earlier? On the, on the, right there. Where, where is that, where is that building? Is that the freight warehouse portion of the building?
Yes, sir, that's the freight building. That's the one Mr. Tisdale says is completely rebuilt.
What, what about that photograph misrepresents the truth?
The truth is that everything in the structure has been rebuilt, component out of time. Roof structure, what you're looking at there is just so bad, is the siding, which we intentionally left on until we replaced it. This would be the west, excuse me, the east end and the south side siding. The north side siding is in fairly good condition. That's this summer photograph.
What, what, let me ask you this. What, what is holding up you completing this work?
It just happened, you know? We can get back on it, we're certainly good. I hear your chairman is now working fresh office.
I'm asking about this-
I see something else.
Yes, I'm, I'm asking about this building right here. This, this is the building that's before us, and, and you're saying that you're working to do, how long have you owned this building?
I own it a while, but that's not the point.
Yes, sir, it's exactly the, it's exactly the point.
You can't set my agenda.
I'm not, I'm not going to.
The building's your work.
I'm, I'm, I'm not arguing with you. I'm not, I'm not trying to set your agenda. But we've got a building here that appears to be a nuisance to me, a public nuisance. I don't want to see it torn down either, but I'd like to see it repaired and fixed.
That's the whole problem, Mayor. All the nuisance that you're addressing happens on me.
No, sir.
You're ignoring everybody else's-
No, sir, that's not true.
Yeah, no, we're gonna get to your relationship just quick.
Uh, if you've got any other comments relative to this, or any, any solution that you'd like to offer, we'd like to hear it now, otherwise we're gonna take action on it.
If you go ahead and tell us now, I swear it'll be thanks instead of that.
All right, what's your recommendation, sir?
Recommend-
Oh, excuse me, is anybody else in the, out here want to make a comment about this?
I want just, if I could, just, Mr. Goldman, you guys are a good person. And I do think, you throw this, I don't want to nitpick too much, but when Mr. Wiggins saw that attractive nuisance thing, I think that you've got to tie everyone who's in charge of it. So, when you throw that in, I think you should mention the specific, you've got mine out there. And I was clear, what, what the attractive nuisance? I've been doing a little bit of this, and you get, everybody all excited about calling it attractive nuisance, the nuisance, making that kids and all of this sort of thing. So, that's just the nitpicking point, but if you don't mind, I'm sorry, and I thank you very much in your election. Well, I'll comment on that.
Well, that's, that's not the issue here tonight. The people will take care of that one way or the other.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
About the building being destructed, it's said that that is recommended because the expense would be more than the va, fifty percent of the value of the structure. But if the property owner chooses to repair it, as long as they provide us an acceptable plan to do that, we're not saying you have to tear it down, but if you don't tear it down, you just simply have to make the repairs in a reasonable time. If, if they're given, if we're given a plan that says, "This is what I'll do, and this is the timeframe that is reasonable to do it, and we determine that's reasonable, that's acceptable." There's nothing says that it has to be torn down, as I read the recommendation there. Is that not right?
It is correct, but we've had no such-
Oh, I, I understand.
We've had no such proposal. Mr. Tisdale says we're, we're not to set his agenda, and we're not, we're not, what we're trying to do. We've got to address these issues in our city, and we're happy to work. I think we've demonstrated over and over again, we're happy to work with anybody as long as they'll work with us. The floor is open. I'm, I'm, I'm all ears to hear a, a proposal to address this building right here, that's so important and so historic. What, Mr. Tisdale, who is the owner and has owned it for how many years, Mr. Tisdale?
Enough to know something about what's going on. I'll give you a proposal. Go change the siding cap. That's all that's wrong with the building, but let me agree with you. I don't know that I can just jump on every one of these fires all at one time.
Well, we've, we've got to have some-
Mayor, I'll give you a schedule. I'll give you a written schedule. I mean, you have any paint and dirt, firework on your windows in the last thirty years, and still saying, "Oh."
Well, that's, that's-
But you want to set me, you want to set me up to have to do all this in thirty days, and you know what you can do.
I'm, I'm not trying to set you up to do anything. I'm not going to argue with you about this, Mr. Tisdale. Now, we're here, we're here to try to enforce this ordinance in a fair-handed way. It, it would help if you would be a little forthcoming and work with us here. And I think you're hearing that from me and the council over and over and over again. But I hear nothing from you, except I might can do it, I don't know when, this, that, and the other. If you, if you'll make, if you will make us a proposal that's reasonable, we'll be happy to accept that, but you've got to follow up on it.
I'll give you a proposal, Mayor, but you're, you're gonna find out you cannot do this kind of stuff in thirty days.
Tell me what your proposal is.
I want to do this, when are you gonna give me a proposal that makes this possible?
Tell me what-
Five years is long enough.
Are y'all ready to take action on this recommendation?
Yes.
All right, I don't know what else to say. Don't know what else to say.
I'll give you a proposal, so, if you tell me what you're looking for, on this building.
How about tonight? Tell us tonight, how long it will take you?
I can do the siding on it, probably within a hundred and twenty days. I can't do it tomorrow morning.
What are the other, what are the other issues other than the siding?
Roof.
The roof?
The roof and the debris, the graffiti.
Can you handle these issues this, this detail? Do you have a copy of what the issues are? Can you handle those details in a hundred and twenty days?
I can. I asked you to ask the police department to arrest the fellow kids breaking into the building and fight for peace.
Well, pardon me?
They know who you are.
Well, they ought to arrest him then.
But I wish they would.
We, we'd also recommend that a proper fence be put around after the work is completed, put around to eliminate the nuisance.
The recommendation is to allow you a hundred and twenty days to achieve the matters set out in this finding. We, we, we are going to declare it a public nuisance, but we're gonna allow you a hundred and twenty days to, to cure that nuisance. And the nuisance will be taken care of the items that are in the finding.
Now, you will be rebuilding the building, not destroying the, the wooden structure.
Right, it's, it's ninety percent rebuilt now. It doesn't feel that way anymore. But sure, it's really-
Well, let, let's get off of the, we're trying to work with you here, John, if you just work with us a little bit, okay? The, 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 the action that I'm, that I hear being recommended is that this property be found to be a public, constitute a public nuisance, but that you be allowed a hundred and twenty days to, what's the correct word, Mr. Lawrie, I'm trying to come up with, to address this nuisance, to, to abate it. That you be given a hundred and twenty days to abate the nuisance that is set out in the findings of the public official, of municipal official.
And if not, we will take stand.
And if, yeah, if, if, if it's not, if it's not abated within that hundred and twenty days, or unless you get an extension from us in some way for very good reason, then the action will be followed up on by, by the city pursuant to the ordinance. I don't know how much fairer we can be than that.
President.
All right, he agrees with that, that's on the record. Everybody in this room hear that?
Can, can we do with this one what we did with the bank building, and, and John gets a signed agreement with us-
Yes, sir.
-by the next council meeting for the hundred and twenty days and-
Yes, sir.
That document you prepared?
It's a document that I'm preparing.
Yeah, we, we can prepare it, as, as long as, you know, you sign and we sign, that's like the bank building, the, the same deal.
Okay, the, the, the motion would be to declare this property a public nuisance.
Wouldn't it be, Mayor, based on what I just said, that we would postpone this one?
We'll, we'll get to that, but I got, you first got to declare it a public nuisance.
Yes.
Then he, he has to come to us with an agreement before the next council meeting-
As stated.
-that's, that sets out that he is going to address these issues that are set out in this finding here within a hundred and twenty days from the day, or the day that we get the agreement.
Okay, well, I thought we tabled the bank building.
Well, the, the bank building was because they had come in and worked out, pretty much worked out an agreement with us beforehand. Mr. Tisdale hadn't done that.
Well, but I'm just going by based on, he said he would agree with a hundred and twenty days.
How many chances he-
He's got to-
If he doesn't, then at the next meeting-
We've got to start all over.
Fourteen days is off that.
We've got to start all over with the, with the abatement process. If, if we don't make a finding tonight, I think we got to start all over again.
So, if we don't have an agreement with the bank building, we got to start all over?
Terry, that's different.
No, I'm, I'm just saying that I think, based on what we did there-
We don't have to do the same, this man we dealt with.
Let's see, uh-
Listen, I understand the reputation that he has, but I am trying as best I can-
I know.
-to be fair.
We all are.
We are, we all are.
And, and we did that for them. We don't even know the guy in California. So, like it or not, I want to make sure we do the same thing.
All right, here, here's what you're saying, here's what you're saying, and this is what we did for the bank building, and, and I don't really have a problem with this, that we continue this public hearing-
Right.
-this public hearing until March the first. And if we don't have a written agreement that sets out the terms that I just got through saying, that it, that this work will be completed within a hundred and twenty days from the date of the agreement, and that the agreement will provide all the matters that are addressed in the findings of the appropriate municipal official, and you've got a package in your hand right here, Mr. Tisdale, that sets out what the, what those deficiencies are that causes this to be a public nuisance. If we don't have that by March the first, then we would declare it a public nuisance and move forward.
Mr. Mayor- That's what I, that's what I was looking for.
With, with the bank building, Mr. Plummer on behalf of the owner agreed to that continuance, so I, I would recommend that Mr. Tisdale agrees to that, so that we don't have to re-notice.
You need to agree that we continue this public hearing till March the first to accomplish what we just said we wanted to accomplish.
Okay.
You, you, let the record show, he agrees with that. All right, then we'll need a motion to continue this, this matter, the public hearing portion of this matter, to March, March the first, pending receiving a written agreement that we've just talked about. Can I have a motion to that effect?
I, I will make that much.
All right, do we have a second?
A second.
Got two seconds.
I'll go ahead and take one.
Well, she said you could say.
All right.
All right, any further discussion between the members of the council?
Now, this is just on this piece of property.
This is only on the, on the Train Depot and the, and the-
The 233 South Cotton Street.
Yeah. Okay? Okay? Any further discussion? All in favor of adopting motion, please indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? All right, there are no other business to come before the council. We do want to announce that we have one housing authority opening. Anyone interested in serving on the housing authority should let us know.
We've got Ken on this. The lawyer.
I'm sorry.
You have any?
Will you?
Ken.
Me.
Mr. Goldman, did you have anything else you wanted to?
Yes, sir, that's, that's, that's everything. Thank y'all very much.
Okay, all right, we will stand adjourned.